It is 5:53, and we will call our City Council Workshop to order. We will start out with citizen petition. Madam Secretary.
CP 23022, Michael Fornino, Transparency and Standards with City Council.
Thank you.
Good evening, sir. You have four minutes.
Good evening. Standards and transparency, unless I'm in error, I thought I put communications in there, but that'll come under transparency. When it comes to expectations from the City Council, recently, we had 30 acres of this town on fire, which required response from two towns. And kudos to Chief Kobinski and all the other first responders and officials who did that. But with 30 acres on fire, you had people displaced from their houses for quite some time with a degree of uncertainty. I don't know what anybody else expects to have a leader, but nobody can seem to account where any of you were during that fire, whether it be the city manager, mayor, at-large. There's at least one at-large member who lived in proximity to that conflagration. And I double-checked with the news crews, and none of them seemed to see any of you there. A little bit of leadership requires a little bit of showmanship. I don't expect anybody out here on the dais to be directing where Chief Kobinski should be putting fire hoses and directing assets, but to be on the ground, let your constituents know whether they voted for you or not, that you're present, capable, assess their needs, and make sure that their needs are met if it's within the capabilities of the city. I mean, when we have communication with the city, I would like to see some without some fog. Specifically, this is not normally my cause, but let's go to animal control and what we call the funding. With regard to animal control, that was left with it being the purview of the Assistant City Manager, which we do not have, which, in my mind, would say that overall oversight goes to Mr. Cagle. With animal control, there was a recent incident where, well, actually, two recent incidents. One where a pet was seized with an unsigned warrant, a clear violation of the Fourth Amendment. Property was seized from a citizen with illegal intent or lack of proper procedure there. And we're still yet to get any answer on that whatsoever. There was also a recent incident where a dog that had puppies was farmed out, and please, if anybody has more correct information on this, where the dog was re-seized along with the puppies, and even the puppies were considered to be aggressive, and they were put down. When several citizens have questioned animal control on this, the animal control manager had a meeting scheduled with a few people, and that meeting was canceled. With the answer, "I can't answer those questions," well, to be blunt, who the hell can answer these questions? This is getting tiresome. And, Mr. Cagle, this is your responsibility, day-to-day stuff. 30 acres of this town on fire, you have an out-of-control animal control shelter that does not follow the law, does not follow the Constitution, will not answer questions, and...
Mr. Fornino. Madam Secretary, I don't have a time.
I have one in this call.
Mr. Fornino has 46 seconds left.
Thank you. We are just...
I would ask, then, who's managing who? Is the city managing the city manager, or is it the other way around? When it comes to this with personnel, as I have pointed out time and again, Mr. Cagle has a track record of not taking accountability, not aware of what's going on in his departments, and then, when called to task on it, he has no answer for us whatsoever. When are we going to get answers from Mr. Cagle on anything, rather than have him firmly ensconced on the third floor and refusing to see the public? This is a track record with him. It is on record, irrefutable. So, we want answers from the city manager when we ask them, and we want clear answers and not excuses.
Thank you. To respond to that fire, and Chief Kobinski, please come up. Councilwoman Gonzalez was there on site, and Chief Kobinski is going to give you the oversight, and I just want to let her speak also. But her being on the site, that's her district. I spoke directly to Chief Kobinski. I did go the next day to see what services, and spoke to the mayor of Harker Heights that night in reference to that, to see what services the city of Colleen. So, we were contact in contact, and I'm going to let Councilwoman Gonzalez go in more detail. We were in contact through the whole process from the time it started until the next day. So, that's not a true statement. Chief Kobinski. Oh, you want to go first, Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Could I just, really quick?
Yes, ma'am.
I did want to just touch on that, because my first initial response was not to go to the media or to the press, sir. So, I was briefed by Mr. Cagle initially, then reached out to the mayor, and then ultimately, subsequently, had a conversation with the residents that were displaced. We put them on speakerphone with Chief Kobinski and the Harker Heights Fire Chief, who then gave them the rundown of what the expectations were. Furthermore, I then went over to the Command Central Station and met with all of the first responders there, and received another update, and then did a Facebook post so that the citizens that were inquiring online could be made aware of the situation. So, I was definitely in the thick of it. But again, my goal was not to be in front of the press. It was to make sure that they had what they needed and that the people were at least informed as far as what they needed to do in the process.
And also, we had Moss Rose Community Center on standby, not only for the residents of Colleen, but also for the residents of Harker Heights on standby that night. Chief Kobinski.
Good evening. Testing. There we go. Good evening, mayor and council. Yes, so this was a bit of a unique fire. The fire started in Harker Heights in their proper city limits. Wind speed direction moved that fire over Roy Reynolds Road and into areas of Colleen city limits. The mandatory evacuations were done in Harker Heights at the open RV air park because there was an immediate threat to those residences, along with some of the residents on Jamie Drive. That was the decision of the Harker Heights Incident Commander, who ultimately was the incident command for this incident. I had responded on the Incident Management Assistance Team, and was immediately assigned to the West Division, which was the area of Roy Reynolds Road and Nolan Creek, where the fire had crossed over into the Colleen area. The evacuations in the Colleen side were voluntary. We had set a line that we felt safe with. If it crossed this specific line, we needed to make sure that we started voluntary evacuations. And the second stage would be the next line that we designated, and that would be mandatory evacuation. So, those voluntary evacuations that citizens of Colleen took from police department personnel who had gone and knocked on every door within the subdivision just gave us an advantage should we have to make a mandatory evacuation. There'd be much fewer houses and fewer numbers of people that we would have to do that in a certain amount of time. We still had over 1,000 feet before that fire even reached a boundary where we were uncomfortable with the fire and would go into the mandatory. We did brief Commissioner Louis Minor, Councilwoman Jessica Gonzalez, and Harker Heights Councilwoman Nash, all at the same time at approximately 9:15 PM. They came to the West Division Command Post where I was located, and Chief Stevens from Harker Heights had joined us as well, provided a briefing. And then, again, as Councilwoman Gonzalez said, more questions came from the open-air RV park residents with regards to information, and that information was passed on from Chief Stevens to me, directly to Councilwoman Gonzalez, who was on speakerphone with those residents, that we expected the residents to be able to get back to their home within about an hour's time. And as a matter of fact, it was about 30 minutes later that they were released to get back into their residences.
But was that Councilwoman Wilson?
Stacy Wilson.
It was Stacy Wilson, sir.
My apologies.
It was Stacy Wilson. And I thank you for that, chief. And we have an interlocal agreement with Harker Heights, and we have an excellent working team. And as I stated earlier, each one of these district representatives, they have a district. I am the mayor, and we have three at-large council members. So, when Councilwoman Gonzalez say, "Please, this is my district. I got it. Just be able to have the resources available if needed," then it's no need for both of us to be out there that night. But that next morning, after I finished church, I was on the scene, talking to the chief, Fire Chief for Harker Heights, and the mayor prior to going, "What can we do? In any fires, Fort Cabosso, or any other cities surrounding, the city of Colleen, we will stand up and we will support." Thank you, chief.
Yes, ma'am.
I want someone to speak on the animal shelter. Chief Lopez, I'm not sure if you can, and the way we're moving forward, council, and I hope you all don't mind anything that said our city staff or council members are not doing. I would love for you to chime in to correct it. If we're wrong, we correct it. If not, we need to correct it, because it's important what goes out on these videos. It's important what goes out to the media. And I will say this again, because someone says something, it doesn't always make it true. And we have to protect the image of the city at all costs. And as mayor, that is something I will do. So, I will give the answer, Mr. Cagle, about the animal shelter. Everyone heard the discussion, and we need to ensure that we follow up with that individual, please. Mr. Cagle.
Well, sure. You've all gotten a written response on the issue on due process on, I believe, the dog named Bruce. You've all received very detailed information on this, and they absolutely did receive due process. This issue about puppies being deemed dangerous, it's the first I've heard of it, so I'll have to look into that.
Will you please? Thank you. Mr. Fornino, thank you. Expect the answer from us. We will now go into citizen comments, and as of right now, I could be wrong. I have Mr. Fornino and Mr. Perser. If anyone else turned in one for citizen comments, we will start off with, oh, here go the rest of them. Ms. Anka, sorry, I have. Welcome back. You have four minutes.
Councilmembers, Madam Mayor, I did not expect to speak about this, but since Mr. Fornino brought this up, Mr. Cagle did not answer my questions. None of the staff answered my questions regarding the unsigned and illegal warrant. The only people they did was Chief Lopez and Judge Krishna. Both of them were willing to meet with me and discuss. And just to let you know, per my meeting with the police department, including Chief Lopez and Lieutenant Sotunis, that's not how they serve a warrant. They were not, they were less than happy when they saw the warrant that that family was served. You're welcome to ask Chief Lopez.
Speaking of transparency, I want to, I read the newspaper article this Sunday, and I agree with the newspaper. Yes, there needs to be transparency, and council members should be asked questions. But just because council members have ties to the development community, it doesn't mean that they're here to vote for their own financial gain. Let me remind everyone that the council with the so-called ties to the development community voted against the developers, against what the developers wanted last year. So, to accuse them of some kind of collusion, it just doesn't hold water. Asking them questions about their ties, sure, yes, that's fair. I think the newspapers should ask questions. If they're colluding with the developers, why did they vote against the developers last year? It doesn't make sense. I do agree that council members should not be able to vote on items that directly reflect on their financial gain. For example, let's say hypothetically speaking, there is a piece of property up for sale and listed by one of the council members as a real estate agent, and it comes out for rezoning. That council member should not be allowed to vote. That's it. That's a clear violation. It was a clear conflict of interest. But other than something like that, accusing the council members that they're here for their own financial gain is unwarranted, in my opinion. I would also like to point out that council members have emails and phone numbers on the city website. So, anybody, not just developers, anybody who, developer haters, please contact all the council members and tell them what you have against developers. Please do it. And if they don't want to listen to you, that's a problem. And the fact that council members meet with developers and other people in the community, that means that they're doing their jobs. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fornino, you have four minutes.
First thing, as discussed, commercial truck parking. Having, again, been a well-experienced commercial truck driver, I would welcome the council and recommend to the council to explore a more professional outfit. Pilot, Flying J, Petro, Travel Centers of America, Loves, something like that. I mean, that would provide commercial truck parking, commercial truck services, would also provide jobs, and a parking lot that would be built to standard, that would be able to handle commercial trucking of all kinds, whether it be drive-through, tanker, hazmat, whatever. It would be built to a standard. It would increase safety for both the cargo, the drivers, and the community at large. I mean, if, I don't know how to do that, but I'll just throw out a couple of more popular names, or, you know, maybe invite somebody with independent venture, you know, something that would meet and/or exceed DOT standards as far as parking goes and all that. And I think that it would be less of a hassle with issuing permits or any strange things or anything worse like that. I know that on the east side, was it Ransier Veterans Memorial, near one of the hotels, it's a dirt lot, which is a temporary fix, but if we ever get rain in this decade again, I mean, that's just going to be a hassle, and trucks stuck in mud is just not a good thing for anybody. Minor point with review of car wash water usage. I don't know that the question on car washes, that I believe it was Dr. Cameron Cochran brought this up. I don't know that it was so much an issue with car washes and their water use. I think it was more to, we just seem to be getting more and more car washes, period. A light example, there was actually a History Channel special, Modern Marvel, something on car washes. They recycle better than 90% of the water that they use throughout the day. So, it's their initial topping off for their storage tanks or whatever, yes, they store a lot of water, but they actually expend very little water. So, I think maybe if we get some clarification on the actual issue there, I think we could at least better appreciate the problem and move forward from there. I don't think it's water usage. Like I said, if somebody knows better than I, History Channel just said that they're designed to recycle the water, because that would be not cost-effective for a car wash owner, unless it's the bay kind where you just pull in and wash it yourself. I could see a lot of water waste with that, but I mean, more of the tunnel design, I don't know the correct term for it, but something like that. I think that expenditure of water is very, very limited as to what we would expect, as opposed to, say, a commercial laundromat or something like that, where that water gets used and thrown right away. But on commercial truck parking, final point on that again is, maybe if the council or whoever is in charge of that sort of thing, reach out to one of the more professional firms that actually does run a truck stop, and maybe get an idea of a compromise between two, how many trucks you would be able to accept, or whatever city code would accept, within a certain amount, and see which truck stop will bite on that, and see what kind of a footprint they would want, or maybe any incentives to attract them.
So, there's a question earlier about why fees have been discussed tonight, and it's because it's revenue, it's part of the budget. I don't know how it is a misconception that fees weren't being paid if the city manager said they were not consistently charged. We, as citizens, need, and as a city, by the way, need and deserve clarification on whether fees were not collected or not paid. One implies that the city was selectively charging or forgetting to charge, and the other implies that people were intentionally circumventing payments. Anything uncollected but charged is bad debt, which should be included in the budget. But I noticed that this year, all of our bad debt has disappeared. We have zero bad debt. In 2024, we had it. In 2023, but that's why it's important to know about those fees, whether they were charged and not collected, or whether they were just not charged in the beginning, in the first place, and how did we get into a place where just a simple procedural policy of bringing a paper receipt over in order to get the next part of the work done wasn't already in place. It seems like it should have been a no-brainer to begin with. I want to skip ahead real quick. I just want to make sure, under the public hearing that is going to be held on September 12th, there are ones, five different items. Are they all going to be the same public hearing, or will there be five different public hearings? Because the last time that this happened, it wasn't clarified in advance. No. And then, I would request that the order get changed, because the order of it on the budget right now has the public hearing coming after the council considers the actual adoption. So, I think that it is a good idea, but there's some questions on this agreement with WCID in Harker Heights. Will it affect the amount of sewage that we can put back into the system? There is a cap and a limit. Otherwise, if it's not going to affect us and our ability to make sure that our citizens, everything we have is serviced, and we're not getting sewage backups or having to reroute any sewer lines that are already existing, hey, let's get rid of the debt and take a million dollars from Harker Heights. That sounds like a good idea to me for a change. And finally, I'd like to talk about the amendment number one to the PSA with Randall Scott Architects to increase the amount for almost $400,000. And I looked through it. It said that the scope of work is changed to include the options of the pickleball court, the covered outdoor seating, the curtain for the gym, and dishwashers that are going to cost a half a million dollars. Those were all part of the original design, actually. I went back to and pulled up the January 19th, 2021 meeting, when this was originally approved and passed. I do remember this, as I was on the council at the time, it was a very big deal. We had a lot of seniors coming in to support it. I don't remember in the presentation being told that we would be charged an extra percentage if prices went up and construction costs went up. So, the question is, how is it that an architect needs more money to do design work because of construction costs? Shouldn't change the cost of doing the drawings or doing the engineering layouts for anything? That appears to be what is being requested, because they want a percentage of the total cost of construction for the renovations at that building.
Your time is up.
Just 30 seconds more, please.
Mr. Perser. Anybody want? Mr. Councilmember Ward, yes or no? She wants an extra minute, 30 seconds. Okay, 30 seconds.
Thank you. So, I just want to say that if I have a contract with anybody else, and I set a price, because we set a price, the city council approved a rate for the architectural work. Their scope isn't changing, the work that they're doing isn't changing. It's everything else that the construction is doing. But this specifically is a request for the architect and design. Their scope hasn't changed from when we first approved this. I disagree with increasing any amount, and I think in the future, we need to reconsider any agreements or contracts that include a percentage of the building.
Your time is up. Thank you. Mr. Perser, you have four minutes, sir. You have four minutes.
Thank you. I'd just like to reiterate about our fees. I would like to see them get more in line with sister cities, surrounding cities. If you look at them, you know, $10,000 for platting fees, I would hope y'all would take that chart home and look at that and do a comparable. And if you have any questions, you give me a call, I'll try to answer them for you. But I would hope that we look at that a little bit closer. I don't think that it's necessary. I don't think that everybody understands who's going to pay the end of the cost on that, and I would just appreciate if y'all would look that over and come up with something that y'all are all seven satisfied with. The other day, I came up here, and I told you all it was a $650,000 deal. I was corrected that it wasn't a $650,000 deal. It was that per acre. It went into a typo. The typo's been out there for two or three years. It started out as a typo, and what I said up here the other night was 100% correct off of what the city's information was, which was per acre. Now, you're going to have another problem, and nobody's talked about it yet, but it says in here, "per occurrence." Okay, per occurrence. I mean, $10,000, $20,000 per occurrence. So, when the city comes out, they're going to inspect my job. Mr. Alvarez knows this. And we're going to walk through it, and they're going to give me a punch list. And then, I'm going to do that punch list, and then come back, and they're going to look to make sure I did it, right? That's how it works. Okay, is that another $10,000? Because it says "per occurrence." So, I know we're fisting the hair at typo, 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 typo. I never believed it was a typo. Today, I don't believe it's a typo. I believe that whoever wrote it, and I don't know who wrote it, don't know. But wherever it came from, they obviously didn't take time or didn't understand it. But when you have "per occurrence" in there, as Mr. Alvarez, because he's been on the other side of the fence, and they could come out there two or three times, and we could get down here and we can argue about $10,000 per occurrence, per final inspection, because it's coming. And correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Alvarez, because it's coming, right? It says "per occurrence." Well, that's, that don't work. And when people write these things, they, I don't know. It's just very frustrating. And you're talking about $10,000, that's some checkers. And I don't want to have to come down here. I've got better things to do. Y'all've got better things to do than listen to me every Tuesday night, and I don't want to be here anyway. But there's a lot of problems that need to be addressed, and it's up to y'all seven to address them, whatever they might and might not be. I have never asked any of y'all to vote, anyway. All I do is, I cannot get my message across in four minutes, and I would like for this young man over here to understand, from the newspaper. The only way we can get our message across is to try to meet with y'all and talk to y'all, just like any other citizen can. I have no connections to none of y'all, and I've got to be able to tell my story, and I can't tell it in four minutes. And I've tried to get the builders to tell their story, and they can't tell their story in four minutes. And there's, I just wish that y'all would...
Mr. Perser, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gonzalez and Councilmember Sagara, if you would like to go in more details about the audit, the questions that you was asking Mr. Cagle, or either one of y'all, this is the opportunity in this format to talk about it. Councilmember Gonzalez, I'll come back to you. Councilmember Alvarez, third, the floor is yours. You can talk about the audit here.
All right. Thank you, mayor.
You're welcome.
What I was talking about this morning is, I just wanted to make it clear that we had two different types of audits, and I think it was already mentioned, Mrs. Gonzalez was able to clarify that a little bit. But we have our internal audit, and then we have the forensic audit that was mentioned today. But in my response that was out there, we were talking about the internal audit. I've served on the internal audit. I think Mr. Grady does an excellent job, and that's something that if the audit committee and the council is in favor of, I think it'd be a good idea to do an internal audit for fees that have not somehow, you know, been collected, whether it's the city's fault or whoever's fault it is. But it's something that I think that should be possibly looked at. And so, that's all I had, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. And I have spoken to... And I have spoken to Mr. Grady, our city auditor. He's working on an audit right now in another department. He's already started the preliminary for a development service, and it's going to come before the audit committee in September, but he needs to work on one at a time. So, he does understand that that is the council intent. Councilwoman Gonzalez, did you have anything you wanted to add to that, Mayor?
No, ma'am, I'm not going to be late at that point.
Okay. You're welcome. Now, back to you, Councilmember Alvarez, and I do apologize for that.
No worries. Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to go back, a resident said earlier that, you know, the question was whether the fees were ever charged or the fees were never collected. As a former inspector for the city of Colleen, I am familiar with the process, and they wouldn't be able to move forward if they were charged a fee and they didn't pay it. So, to me, that tells me that they were not charged the fee. Otherwise, when I worked for the city, and we said, "This is the stage that you're at, this is any fee that's due, and if you didn't pay it and we didn't have a receipt, you didn't move on to the next level, to the next phase." So, if there are any fees that were not paid, it's because they were not charged at the time that they should have been charged. So, that brings me back to that. Talking about car washes, I've heard a lot of people say, you know, Colleen has so many car washes, you see it on social media all the time. And City of Colleen is like any other local government municipality, we're not a communist form of government. We practice and believe in free enterprise and capitalism. The reason why we have so many car washes here is because so many people like to wash their cars and keep them clean. Nobody's going to invest millions of dollars to build a car wash if there's not a need for it. Same reason we have so many fast food restaurants, because we like to eat it. So, you know, when you come up with these questions, the city doesn't control what types of businesses come to the city. It's free enterprise. Any type of business you want to put up, as long as it meets the zoning for the piece of land that you want to put it on, by all means, invest your hard-earned dollars and open the business that you want. I had, I lost my train of thought on the last item, but...
I can come back to you.
Perfect. Thank you.
I can come back to you after Councilmember Boyd. Sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm actually going to call for some clarification relating to the comment relating to the scope of work with the architects. This is also a concern I had going through the presentation. The $264,931 for construction cost escalation, can we get an explanation on how that's baked into that?
Sure. We'll have it in the presentation, but to answer it now, it's, that's the AIA architectural contract, that's what it was based on.
Which is going to be in the presentation?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Wait for the presentation. The other thing I was going to ask about was the "per occurrence" that was recently mentioned at $10,000. Is that, in fact, what's stated?
Well, yes and no. The ordinance that's been in effect for a very long time, it has three categories based on the number of acres. And so, it's "per acre" to tell you which category it goes into, and then it's "per occurrence." That's the way it has been for a long time. What happened the other night was, when it got transferred to the slide, it just said "per acre." So, it's always been "per acre" to tell you which of the three categories it goes in, and then "per occurrence." I don't, I'm pretty sure I've explained that right, I'm looking to see if our city engineer is here, but there he is, and maybe feel free to correct me if I'm wrong.
Are we doing the presentation?
Not, not on this one.
There we go.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor. Dan, sir, Councilmember. The city manager is correct, it is kind of based on the unit being the acre, "per occurrence" was what bracket a permit goes into. So, even though we're, you know, we get one permit, to us, that is the occurrence. So, if we have a, you know, what was explained was, for final subdivision, we have a lump sum fee for all the inspections that occur in the subdivision, so that permit is the occurrence, not each inspection.
Okay. The question, the next part of the question is, when it's related to "per occurrence," are we ensuring that when the city goes back, we're taking, those punch list items are taken care of, so we're not having to come back a second time and potentially charge?
Yes, that is correct. Every time, when we do, right now, we started a pre-construction meeting. The very first thing we do, we explain to the contractors, are the fees, what is expected, who your inspector is, what inspections are being done. And then, when we get done near the end, we have a final punch list, which we make sure is corrected. Again, that is the last step, so before we do any acceptance, we have to make sure all those items are done.
Gotcha. And how often do we find that we have to go back a second or third time for punch list items?
Our contractors are usually pretty good. It's usually minor things that we have to deal with. A lot of it has to deal with final stabilization. Now, being in a drought, we have to take some precautions and, almost like a concession, work with a, work with a maintenance period to get to a time when you can actually plant grass, but make sure we have a suitable erosion control still in place up until that point, just because we're in a drought consideration. So, we still work with a contractor. But things like the quality of the curb, quality of the ramps, usually, we don't have a whole lot of issues about that at all.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome, sir. Councilmember Alvarez, did that thought pop back in your head?
It was along the same lines that Councilmember Boyd was just on. I just want to, maybe for semantics purposes, restate that one more time. So, subdivision, construction plan review fee, based on acreage, whatever that fee is in the fee schedule, that's the fee for the entire subdivision, for the package of inspections that goes along with the subdivision, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. All right. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, any more questions, council? And to piggyback on you, Councilmember Adams, I mean, Alvarez, I do like to wash my cars, so I bought a pass, and I think I go three to four times a week. So, yeah, I like my car clean. So, with that being said, do we have any more comments from council? Okay. Discussion item for regular city council meeting on September 12th, 2023, Madam Secretary, minutes.
Hillman 23021, consider minutes of regular city council meeting on August 8th, 2023. Hillman 23022, consider minutes of regular city council meeting on August 22nd, 2023.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Resolutions.
RS 23133, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the execution of amendment number one to the professional services agreement with Randall Scott Architects Incorporated for the community and senior center expansion and renovation project in the amount of $390,631.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Council, you have two times each to speak two times for five minutes. Mr. Zager, how are you, sir?
I'm still doing okay, thank you, Mayor.
Awesome.
Okay, well, we're here to discuss the contract amendment from the architect for the community, community senior center project. So, the project apparently started in 2019. The architect, Randall Scott, was hired to perform a needs assessment and conceptual design for the community and senior center project located off of WS Young on January 19th. The, that needs was done, the study was done, and then on January 19th, 2021, Randall Scott was awarded a professional service agreement to actually design the project that's under construction right now for the construction, and also provide some construction support for the community senior center. And that original contract was for $543,825. On March 16th, 2023, that was our second bid that we had for the project. Originally, we did bid in December, we didn't receive any bids, so we bid it again. And then, on March 16th, we received two bids. We awarded the contract for the senior center for an amount of $7,416,835 to HCS Inc. And on May 9th, that's when the council awarded it. To go back, originally, when we set up the contract with Randall Scott, the original estimate for the project was $4.3 million. And that was actually what the, what the fee schedule was based off of. And then, Randall Scott, since then, has made a contract amendment request in the amount of $390,631. In that, there is $264,931 as a result of construction cost escalation, and this is per the contract verbiage. The AIA documents, what this one particular project was used, has that clause in there where the city is responsible for a percentage of any increase between the difference of the original project estimate and what the actual bid was. It is a standard in architectural contracts. Typically, we don't use those contracts. This is, since I've been here, that's the only one we're under. We've had another project come in requesting that, and we denied it, we went back to our standard contract. Additionally, there was instances that delayed the project, things that slowed it down while during design, and that's $119,000. One of them was actually based on surveying services that the city was providing. The consultant we had actually delayed the project by nine months, just because of errors in their survey, not being able to get the work done, and that slowed down the project. And of course, COVID, the original architect, project manager on the project did pass away from COVID, so that delayed a few things. We've lost staff on both Randall Scott and also on the city during this whole project. So, they have requests because of those delays that essentially brought the project to a later bid date than was originally anticipated. And then, the last one is $6,700, that's mainly for reselection of items that are no longer available. So, obviously, with COVID, a lot of things disappeared, a lot of materials, a lot of options, and so, having to go and find some new products, that was another request that the architect brought in. Staff have, we have reviewed the request. We looked at, we reviewed the contract, we had to see if we were obligated to go by that percentage, so we worked with legal. It is a contract, it is something that we are obligated to enforce. But also, we reviewed the dollar amount, as if we had our original contract, are those percentages right? Is it the amount that we would expect for a design and construction support for a project this size, based on the dollars that are actually out there? And even reviewing to the original $4.3 million. And in that review, we actually found that with $4.3 million, I think it was in the staff report, that roughly, it's about 21% of the design, of the cost of construction would have gone towards the design and construction, and that is really within what we normally see on all our projects. We typically look at 15% for design, and then construction can be anywhere from eight to 15% for the additional construction support throughout the life of the project. So, this actually fell right in that amount. So, we felt that those dollar amounts are reasonable, what's being requested for this time, plus it is also part of the contract that is for this project with this architect. City council has two options. One is to do not approve the amendment. If we do, then obviously, the architect will probably stop helping support the construction, do the reviews that are required, and it would delay some of the needed support we have for construction of the project going on right now. And then, obviously, the second option is to approve the amendment, and we can keep rolling forward, get this project done, get it complete, and then get the opening date of the community center in the original time that we're hoping for. And our staff recommendation, obviously, is number two. We do feel, again, that that amount is within a reasonable amount for a project this size, and we just would like to make sure that the project keeps moving forward. And with that, I'll open up for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Zager. Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Totally understand how the contract, and you said, "This is not our normal contract, normal way we do a contract."
It's not, it's not our standard contract. We, I use an engineering contract, and that is our standard type of contract that we use for all our services. This was an architectural one that got through the, got through the system. I mean, it was, I could say it was before I got here, but it's not something that I definitely do not recommend using for our type of work. I like the lump sum.
So, we're going to go back to using the one that looks more advantageous to us?
Yes.
So, you already answered that. I thought the, those three items that are added in the cost, I thought they were part of the original design that was brought before council.
They may have been part of the design, but during the bid process, we had them add alternates. We had the original base bid for the building, and then we had those three options as being an alternate, so they added to the construction cost. So, when determining the percentage based on the contract, we had to look at adding those three items to it.
All right. Thank you, and I appreciate you put the risk. I had a conversation with Mr. Rebell about that. Put the risk of not, of our decision forward against adding in your presentation. Thank you.
Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you. Mrs. Zager, the status, where are we at on the status of the community center?
It's under construction right now. They're working on doing some of the demolition, the abatement. The drywall that was in there did have levels of asbestos, so we are having to do the asbestos cleanup on removal of the drywall, and then it's removal of the internal walls and everything, that beginning part of the construction. So, that's what's going on right now.
Very good. And the completion date is probably when?
We're looking for, I believe, fall of next year to open, for an opening.
I understand, I just want to make sure we have that information publiced now. And also, I understand now, related to the contract, we're just kind of subject to the terms based on the type of contract, so thank you for that clarification.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Boyd and Adams, the other concern I have is the contract that we've made this amendment as we move forward. Do you anticipate any more changes that will delay the grand opening of the senior center in 2024?
No, I don't. Everything that this contract with the architect is based on the construction cost. The contractor's contract itself has clauses in there for additional services or contingency based on things that may arise during the project itself.
And I thank you for that. A lot of senior citizens that are at Lions Club Park, you know, they anticipate moving in soon, and this delay, you know, was a concern to many of them, because it's like, when is it ever going to open? But it's no fault of anyone, it's just with inflation and everything that's going on, things happen, but we're on the right track now, right?
We are.
All right, sir. Thank you for that. Madam Sec, any more questions from council before I move on? All right. Madam Secretary.
RS 23134, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the Rowatware Incorporated hardware upgrade for solid waste collection vehicles in an amount not to exceed $180,384.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Good evening, Mr. Randall, how are you, sir?
Good, good evening, Mayor. Madam Mayor, council, city manager, city attorney. Before you tonight, we are talking about the upgrade to the Rowatware hardware system that we're utilizing in the solid waste vehicles. Rowatware is basically a system that provides many useful services to include the ability to capture photos and GPS tracking. It allows supervisory staff back in the office or out in the field to track vehicle locations, the speed of the vehicle, and driver events such as skipped containers, pickups, landfill trips. So, basically, know where our vehicles at throughout the day. It also protects the citizens when they call in and say that they have missed their service. We can look in the system and see if the service was actually missed, or if the container was not out there, so we kind of end the dispute when it comes to that piece of it. Rowatware has been using the City of Colleen since 2015. It's been a valuable service to us. And as I stated before, we've experienced a lot of reduction in the cost and disputes about containers not being serviced, because we do have the system out there. Solid Waste continues to provide us quality service, not just to the citizens of Colleen, I mean, to the, to the solid waste, but the citizens and the businesses of Colleen, to protect both interests there. Effective June 20, 2024, Rowatware will no longer be able to support Windows Surface tablets that are currently utilized by the city, as they are moving to a more Android-based system. This is the reason we're bringing this forward tonight, to move forward with purchasing 57 Android tablets that will ensure Rowatware capabilities are available in all of our collection vehicles. Our outstanding solid waste staff, they service over 50,000 residential and... Our outstanding solid waste staff, they service over fifty thousand residential and three thousand commercial customers weekly, and this system provides a great service in that as it allows us to create routes for these drivers. Rowatware has proven to be very beneficial, and it has improved cost of customer service, and it's real-time data. The data that we get from this is phenomenal, and the fact that the director or anybody in the supervisory staff can look out there and see what's going on. If there's a vehicle, that accident that happened, we know the speed of the vehicle when the accident happened. Recently, we had folks call in and said our drivers were speeding through the school zone. We pulled the chips, know they was going well below the speed. So it protects the driver and protects the community at the same time, so this, this system is invaluable to us. We have two alternatives here tonight, and the staff recommends that the City Council authorize the City Manager or his designated to execute an agreement with Rowatware in the amount of one, one hundred eighty thousand, three hundred eighty-four dollars, and authorize the City Manager or his designated to execute any and all change orders with the amounts, within the amount set by state and local law. And I'm available for any questions on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Two quick questions. Will it be compatible with our new vehicles when we purchase them? And the second question is, the upgrades to this software, how often, and is there a cost to it?
No, this is, this is gonna take, it's basically changing the, the software, the tablets from Windows-based to Android-based, so we get new tablets in the vehicles, and we did account for the new vehicles that we're gonna be adding to our fleet. Yes, ma'am. So that's, that is factored into this, this cost.
Thank you, sir. Any more questions? I apologize. Councilmember Adams.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. You already asked the first question. The other one, I know it's almost like wagging a dog. I just want to make sure, I see that you got the sole source request, and I know there's no other, and in our conversation before, that this did save us money, and you just talked about how it made us more efficient. My, in your conversations with Rowatware, they, they don't anticipate disappearing. I know you can't answer that, because I don't want us to buy a bunch of these, and all of a sudden.
Rowatware was the, actually, the, they were the catalyst for this type of service, actually. And they've been around forever. They've been in a lot of cities here. City of Temple went to them about three years ago, City of Waco. Several cities across the country have Rowatware. They are one of the largest providers of this type of service. They're not, they're not going anywhere.
And, and it was time to change the, the Windows tablets anyway, because of their, their usage?
End of life, yes, sir. They, they come to end of life in June next year. We're just being proactive and moving forward, because we do have some that's deficient now, so just instead of just piecemealing it, let's go ahead and upgrade the entire fleet, and we'll be ready to rock and roll.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Sagara.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mrs. Mayor, Madam Mayor. I get it right?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry. Did you say something?
No. I'm still, I'm still jet-lagged, that's what it is.
Oh, I forgot your trip.
Mr. Reynolds, I, I didn't know that, you know, sometimes people call you, because they say, you forgot to pick up my garbage can, and you can track that.
Yes, sir.
Because I think I'd be one of those.
Yes, sir. I was not gonna call you out, sir.
You didn't have it out.
You guys respond quick, and it's like, they forgot to get my garbage can. So thank you for not calling me out, because I was probably one that forgot to put my trash out, you know?
Absolutely.
And you guys came out, but I just want to give you kudos, because I think, you know, I sat on this council, and we were thinking about outsourcing this.
Yes, sir.
And at that time, you know, I see that we've gone a long, long way to where we're at today, and, you know, it's the technology, it's the leadership, it's everything, that it's, it's gone from like night and day. I mean, imagine a few years ago, we're, we're here, we're discussing for months about outsourcing, and here we are. It's one of our, our best services in the city, and it makes money, too. So it's, it's a good system, and I just want to say thank you, thank you for what you do.
Well, that's a credit to Mr. Joe Dale and his team, sir, so I'll pass the word on.
Appreciate it.
That's great. Thank you for bringing it up, Councilmember Sagar, because we did not outsource. You were mayor at that time. I say, it's just like no became, give it time, it'll work, and it is doing a great job right now. I mean, excellent job. I do have a follow-up question, sir, if you don't mind, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Once these upgrades take place, will it have any effect on services, the daily services, while the tablets are getting upgraded?
No, ma'am. We have a maintenance day scheduled every week for Wednesday, when we don't run residential routes, so Rowatware is gonna be willing to work with us on those, on that day to get them installed. It should not be a big overhaul, since it's installing tablets. Our IT team has been phenomenal in this process. They've been with us throughout. They're gonna be there quarterbacking that as well, to make sure it's a smooth transition.
All right, sir. I think that is extremely important to let residents know their services will continue.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Madam Secretary.
RS twenty-three, one three five. Consider a memorandum resolution approving a negotiated settlement between the Atmos City Steering Committee and Atmos Energy regarding the 2023 Atmos Rate Review Mechanism filing.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Attorney Clemens, good evening, ma'am.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is the Atmos rate case. I'm gonna give you a little bit of background on this. Cities exercise original jurisdiction over the level of gas rates charged within their boundaries. Colleen is a member of the Atmos City Steering Committee, along with the hundred and eighty-one other cities served by Atmos Mid-Tex. Since 2007, Atmos and the Steering Committee have worked under an alternate rate review process referred to as the Rate Review Mechanism, or RRM, as opposed to the statutory Gas Reliability Infrastructure Program called GRIP. The RRM process allows for more comprehensive rate review and an annual evaluation of expenses and revenues, including capital investment, and RRM cities usually maintain monthly advantages over the GRIP rates, and that is the case this year as well. So with this filing, Atmos filed a rate request on March 31st, claiming it's entitled to additional system-wide revenues of one hundred sixty-five point nine million. This is based on a test year ending December 31st, 2022. The Steering Committee consultants analyzed this filing and determined that the system-wide deficiency under the rate, under the RRM should be one hundred and thirty point nine million dollars instead. The committee and Atmos negotiated a settlement, and Atmos, Atmos' request was reduced from one hundred sixty-five point nine million to one hundred forty-two million. This would result in the average residential increases of six dollars and forty-seven dollars, forty-seven cents per month, or seven point three one percent, and the average commercial usage increase is twenty-four dollars and seventy-two cents per month, or five point one nine percent. The alternatives here are to disprove the negotiated settlement or approve the negotiated settlement. Again, this is settlement reached by the Steering Committee representing the hundred and eighty-one cities, and our rate is better than the GRIP rate if, when this goes into effect. So the staff and executive committee of the Steering Committee recommend approving the negotiated settlement between the Steering Committee and Atmos regarding the 2023 Rate Review Mechanism filing. And I'm here for any questions. Also, we have a representative from Atmos who's here, if you have any questions of her.
All right. Mayor pointed the iPad towards me, so, but I don't see any questions. Anybody got any questions there? All right, we're good. Next item.
RS twenty-three, one three six. Consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the restated and amended water disposal contract with WCID number one to include the city of Harker Heights as a customer.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes, ma'am. A little background, this one, basically, the city of Harker Heights. Hacks has asked to be able to discharge wastewater into the south plant. They went to WCID with this request. Being that we, that south plant was basically built for the city of Colleen's usage, we will have to, this body will have to approve any agreement to get to allow Harker Heights to enter into that. So a little background, in 1968, the city of Colleen entered into a wastewater, wastewater disposal contract with Bell County Water Control and Improvement District, known as WCID number one, for the treatment of city's wastewater. Originally, WCID agreed to operate the sanitary sewer system for the sole benefit of the city of Colleen and Fort Cavasso, formerly known as Fort Hood. This contract has been amended eight times for various reasons over the years. The restated and amended waste disposal contract here tonight incorporates those amendments and proposes changes relating to the addition of the city of Harker Heights as a customer to discharge waste into the sanitary sewer system. WCID and the city of Colleen have determined that it's in the best interest of, of the parties to amend and restate the agreement, provide for the addition of Harker Heights as a customer with the contractual right to discharge waste into the sanitary sewer system, and to modify certain provisions relating to the maximum discharge quantities for the city of Colleen and Harker Heights. Price of service, allocation of existing future debt obligations, WCID and the city of Colleen are authorized to enter into this contract pursuant to the Texas Constitution and laws of the state of Texas, including chapter ninety-one, uh, seven ninety-one Texas government, as amended, and chapter thirty of Texas Water Code, as amended. Anytime we're doing something like this, the, the big question is, what is the benefit to us? How is this gonna benefit the city of Colleen? First of all, we have a six million gallon a day capacity at that plant. The city of Colleen is not even touching, uh, using half of that at this, at this time. The city of Harker Heights has requested two million gallons a day, which we feel that we can, can handle that. WCID is in agreement. The benefit to us and to our citizens is that by doing this, we had New Gen LLC look at what the cost of this would be for Harker Heights to enter into this agreement. It was basically, it came out to be, they would take on all the current debt, starting in one October. Totaling about twelve million, six hundred and thirty-seven thousand and three hundred and five dollars. They would also give, have a one-time payment to the city of Colleen from the city of Harker Heights of one million, thirty-nine, thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars and forty-six cents, totaling the thirteen million, six hundred and seventy-seven thousand, eighty, eighty-three dollars, that we would basically be passing on that debt service, as well as receiving a million dollar one-time payment. So that's the benefit to us, is we don't have to make that payment. We still have our capacity. It's not gonna affect our citizens who are currently discharged into that location, and it's also gonna help our sister city in a time of their need to make sure they can discharge in there as well. We have two alternatives, and the staff recommends the City Council authorize the City Manager or his designated to execute the restated and amended water disposal contract with WCID to include Harker Heights and meet the needs for wastewater disposal as required by the Texas Commission of Environment Quality, known as TCQ. I have Representative from WCID, Mr. Ricky Garrett, and the attorney for WCID, Mr. Opal, is here, as well as the Water and Sewer Director for the city of Colleen, Mr. Steve Cony, if you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds, but I just have one question for you to explain to the public. As city of Colleen, we are continuing to grow. The question gonna come out is, why would we do this, and our city is going to continue to grow? If we need that space, what would happen? The maintenance on the facility, could you go in more detail about that, sir?
Mr. Garrett.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Hey, sir. How are you doing?
I'm well, thank you. So the, the contract provides for capital outlays, such as a need for expansion, the same as it does for the water, wholesale water contracts. So if the growth moves to a point where expansion is needed as dictated by TCQ rules, then, then there would have to be an expansion project. And capital outlay would be based on, so if this deal goes through, and Harker Heights has two MGD, Colleen has four MGD, but we need nine total, then the difference would be a two-nines, I'm sorry, a two-six, four-six split on the upgrade. Capital outlays would be the same if it's for a condition that would require a debt service issue. The maintenance is the same as, same model as we use for the wholesale water contracts. It's total operating cost annually divided by total gallons projected. So did I answer that question?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Anyone else? Or Councilmember Alvarez, sir?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Reynolds, for that presentation. I think my question or concern is along those same lines. You're saying currently that plant has six million MGD of capacity per day.
Yes, sir.
We're using currently less than half, so.
Around two point four, two point six.
Two point four, and Harker Heights wants to take two of that. That only leaves around a million plus or minus MGD left, and so how long, you know, I'm not holding you, holding you guys to this, but in your professional experience and opinion, how long do you think, based on how you've seen Colleen grow, that this one million MGD capacity, remaining capacity would last until expansion would be necessary?
Yes, so it's, it's strictly dependent upon rain. You know, with this past two years, as dry as it's been, we could go another thirty years. I'm, I'm not kidding, it's, it's been flatlined, but as the, as the rain returns, and it will, then it just depends on how much volume. In the years preceding the current drought, we were, we were bumping seventy-five percent a few times, and the TCQ rule says if you exceed seventy-five percent for three consecutive months, then you gotta start planning. If you exceed ninety percent for three consecutive months, then you have to be under construction within a year. So, but what I've seen is the state is acknowledging the climate swings we're having, and they're more tolerant if we go through a monsoon kind of season, that that's being taken into consideration. So I can't answer your question directly. I can say if we, if we stay dry, I don't, it's, I don't know when, it's a long time. If we get into really wet seasons, it could be a couple of years, we need to be in design.
Is that because the plant also processes stormwater?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Collection systems take on a lot of stormwater. Yes, sir.
Okay, gotcha. So I, I mean, I guess at the, at the end of the day, the choice is, we get, we hand off twelve and a half million dollars worth of debt service to the city of Harker Heights, and we get a cash payment of a little over a million dollars, and we roll the dice on future expansion, or you say no, and you continue to pay this debt service of twelve and a half million dollars. I guess, and maybe this question's for the city manager, has it been thought to, let's assume this all worked out, and we said, the council said, yeah, let's move forward with this, we think it's a good idea. These savings that we're gonna, you know, incur, not only from the cash payment, but not having to pay the remainder of that debt service, would there be a way to, I don't know, set aside some of that money to where it's earmarked for that future expansion once it got here?
There is, and we've already had those discussions, and I think it's, it's either all of it, or some significant portion of it ought to be encumbered for that.
Perfect. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. Both of you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You probably went over this while I was away from the dice. Likely a need for expansion in the future, as was alluded to by Councilman Alvarez, what type of costs are we looking at potentially for an expansion in the future, so we have some type of idea?
The only numbers I have, sir, are a couple of years old, and the world has changed pretty dramatically in the last couple of years with construction costs. It, it goes back to how much expansion's needed, and we will meter, assuming the deal goes through, we will have discrete meters for each entity, and so the rainfall affects different systems differently, and, but that assessment would be made at that time. I don't recall the, I think we had a twelve MGD, which would basically be a doubling, and I, I think it was, do you remember, Rafi?
I don't. I just, you remember?
I wanna say it's twelve or thirteen dollars a gallon. It's, you know, we're looking at the water treatment expansion possibilities, and it's around six. Wastewater historically is, is almost double what water treatment cost is. But I don't, I don't have a hard figure for you. I can get that and bring it back.
Okay. Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
And I think that number would be a moving target, sir, but I, I think that if we go this route, we're not, it's, it's not just on the city of Colleen, because expansion is gonna be inevitable at some point as we grow the city out, but we will have a partner to help offset some of the costs when we get there, while we're leaving this, this twelve million dollars in debt right now.
Sure. Just like to have an idea, so it doesn't bother us.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Board. Uh, Mr. Reynolds, you made a statement. So the, um, the expansion is predicated by TCEQ requirements, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and what did you just, I couldn't hear you when you was telling, Councilmember Board, we won't be the only individuals helping with the expansion if it's on the Colleen side?
If we go into this agreement, then we have our, our sister city of Harker Heights would be also, uh, helping to fund any, uh, operation and maintenance as well as any future expansion of, of this, uh, facility.
And that's on either side, Colleen or Harker Heights?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Yes, sir, Mr. Garrett.
It's based on metered flows.
Yes, so if we ask for the, the expansion, it's going to be, go ahead.
Yeah, so, so an expansion would be based on metered flows and that would all be taken into consideration. So it would be a discussion we'd have to go through in a work session where we'd have the meter data to compare.
Yes, sir, thank you. But I just wanted to see if I heard you correctly, both parties will help with the fee on that, okay. Councilmember Gonzalez.
I think I just want to make sure I understood what you said, sir. So you said that if we're in drought season, or in drought, it is, works to our advantage for a longer period of time. Because I know right now they're projecting like 75% chance at 2030 at least, we're going to be in that situation. You said also that the City of Colleen itself alone has bumped up to the 75% without adding, so if we add the City of Harker Heights, the likelihood of us bumping up to or going over that, 2030 is right around the corner if all things fall into place, the likelihood of us exceeding that would put us in a design phase required, as required by TCEQ, is that correct?
Well, there's another aspect to this that, um, Jeffrey and Mr. Conia are more familiar with, but there's a diversion point within the City of Colleen that has diverted more flow towards the 38th Street Plant. So what Heights is currently, uh, planning to send to us is, it's about a wash. So basically the, the need for expansion is back about where it was because you're sending more flow to the north.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir. We're going to have Mr. Cagle going to wrap it all up and put everything in perspective for us, because that's a lot of lingo. We, he's all over my head with some of that talk.
That's a lot, just one thing I wanted to mention is we don't intentionally treat storm, stormwater. Um, it's, it's infiltration inflow. If you had a perfectly tight system, it, the rainfall wouldn't matter, but nobody in the world has a perfect system, but we, we work hard and you'll see projects in the future where we improve, whether it's manholes or replacing pipes or what have you to, to reduce that as much as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Cagle, and it goes back, and I'm going on Councilwoman Gonzalez. We talk about everything is predicated on rainwater, but in, on the other hand, we saying that we have enough, uh, the system work good enough for us for 30 years. So that's what's throwing me off about that 75%. Could you elaborate on that, Mr.?
What he was talking about, if we have to get to the 75%, if, if Harker Heights is sending over two, two million gallons a day and we're diverting two million gallons from there to the 38th Street Plant, it's basically a wash in the fact that you're not really increasing capacity at that plant because we're diverting two million gallons a day to 38th Street, which 38th Street can handle, so it kind of, that's how.
Okay, it balances itself out.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, that was, that part missing. All right, there's no more questions, thank you, all three of you, thank you. Madam Secretary.
RS 23137, consider a memorandum resolution rejecting bid, bid received for bid number 2339, Chaparral Pump Station Project.
Mr. Reynolds.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Secretary.
This is basically to reject a bid that was submitted for this project. Um, a little background, 2019 wastewater and, water and wastewater master plan includes project for, uh, W, construction of an eight million gallon a day pump station at the site of the Chaparral Elevator Storage Tank, um, that will pump water from Chaparral Elevator Storage Tank into the water distribution system in the upper pressure plane. Uh, bid number 2339, uh, Chaparral Pump Station Project was advertised to bid on July 2nd and July 9th of this year. On August 3rd, uh, one bid was received in response to the bid number 2329, it was received from SSP, uh, Industries in the amount of 8,434, 400, 434,743 dollars. Uh, Freezer Nichols, who did the master plan and gave us the original estimates for this, uh, at 4.5, has recommended that we not award the contract due to the significant difference of this, uh, contract and the difference, uh, from the original estimate was about, uh, 4.5 and the original estimate was by 5.2, okay? We have two alternatives and of course we are, we, the staff recommends the city council authorize the city manager to reject bid 2339, Chaparral Pump Station, allow for us to let the market settle a little bit and then go back out and rebid this, hoping to get more than just one bidder for this project. Um, when we did the pre-bid, we had more people that was interested, but for some reason we went off a bid, you get this, uh, one, one, one bidder, so we want to go back out later, see what we get at that point and then go forward. And we're available for any questions.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, just from your part, so are you seeing the trends to go in that direction that we could have? Because I, I know we had talked about the upper and lower pressure drains, especially for that area that's affected, um, because that would have, eventually have a negative effect on that, correct?
What's that? Well, right now, when the elevator storage tank will be able to be okay by itself, but we would need that at some point to do that, so we can postpone this project a little bit down the road and go back out and see. We think we can get a better, better price for this and we'll get more people to bid on it, so, um, right now, just looking at what's, it's, it's coming over 39% higher than what was, what was recommended. I think that's just a little ridiculous, so we want to just roll the dice and see what, what's out there. Might come back at the same price, it might come back with four or five bids and you got two or three that's lower, so we just want, we want to see what's out there before we just go ahead and spend this kind of money.
What would be your, your, I guess, the, your point of no return, we come back with whatever bid you got?
Well, we'll look to go back out after the first quarter, um, and, and see what's out there. Uh, the market is kind of settling down a little bit. I mean, some bids that we expected to come in way higher, like the Tremere Basin Project, it came in almost on point with what we had projected for that, so we want to go back out there, but in that bid you had four, three or four bidders out there and we got one bidder here, that's, that's, I think to be good stores of the city's money, we just need to go back and rebid this.
Thank you.
Thank you, just one question, will the delay in construction have any effect on the water distribution center where it's applicable?
No, sir, this is going to en, en, enhance our abilities out there and as the city grows in that direction, yes, we would need that, but right now, no, sir, it's not going to, it's not going, it's not going to cause any issues. Yes, sir.
Mr. Reynolds, for clarity, this proposed pump station project is for wastewater and potable water or is it just wastewater?
No, this is a pump station, it's, it's for potable water.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
RS 23138, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the city manager to accept a Federal Aviation Administration Airport Infrastructure Grant offer for the design of the Passenger Terminal Mechanical Improvements Project at Colleen Fort Hood Regional Airport in the amount of 267,322 dollars.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Uh, the, um, item we have before you tonight is the acceptance of an FAA grant for a Passenger Terminal Mechanical Design Improvement Project. A little bit of background, the bipartisan infrastructure law signed in, uh, bill, signed into law in November 15th, 2021, provides 15 billion in airport infrastructure grants over a five-year period for airport-related projects. Uh, staff has applied for a FAA, uh, bill, airport infrastructure grant in the amount of 267,322 dollars to fund 90% of the design services, project administration and building services of, of the project Passenger Terminal Mechanical Improvement Project at the Colleen Fort Hood Regional Airport. Uh, matching funds in the amount of 29,700 will come from the FAA PFC application that was approved back in February of 23. Uh, the project comprised of various components, including the replacement of the baggage claim carousels and the associated belt system, upgrading the baggage system control hardware and software, replacing the precondition air on boarding bridges one and six, and the replacement of the emergency generator. And this project would have no impact to our operational fund or fund balance. Uh, the grant offer is anticipated to arrive on or around September 1st, 2023, of which we expect to receive it any day, we haven't received it yet, but it has a drop-dead date of being signed by September 14th. Therefore, we are asking pre-authorization for the city manager to sign and accept this grant. Uh, these are your alternatives. And the, of course, our recommendation is for the city council to pre-authorize city manager or designee to accept the airport infrastructure grant in the amount 267,322 and execute all documents in connection, uh, with the acceptance.
Thank you.
And I'd answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson, there are no questions for you, thank you. Madam Secretary.
RS 23139, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing a change order with Chastain Enterprises Incorporated for solid waste refuse trucks in the amount of 75,453 dollars.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Good evening, Mrs. Tannen.
Good evening, ma'am, as councilmembers, city attorney, city secretary, city manager. Uh, this item is to present a change order that we need for the Chastain Enterprises. Uh, and going some background, uh, we have a three-solubility automated side loters order in fiscal year 2022 with the fleet replacement program. Uh, and like everybody knows from, because of COVID, uh, we have some manufacturing delays resulting in material cost increases between October 2021 and April 2023, those increases were from 30% to 118%. The result was the increase of 25,151 per unit. Uh, the price increase is affecting the previously approved purchase exceeds the 50,000 threshold and it requires city council approval. The three automated side, uh, automated side loters, PO number 220604, increased by 25, 151 per unit for a total increase of 75,453. Uh, we have 31,647 N reserve appropriation and the additional funding is included in the budget amendment, uh, that is going to be presented later and that is for 43,806. The recommendation is the city council approve the change order with Chastain Enterprises in the total amount of 75,453. You have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Thank you, there are no questions, Subiu, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary.
RS 23140, consider a memorandum resolution awarding RFP 2336 to United Healthcare for an excess risk policy, stop-loss insurance for medical and pharmacy claims under the city health insurance plan effective October 1, 2023 in the amount of 739,718 dollars.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Good evening, Mrs. Spock, how are you doing?
Good evening, Mayor, city council, city manager, the item before you is the acceptance of the bid for stop-loss insurance. I'm going to try to get through this presentation, if I can, I have Kate here to help me, to be my, my helper on this. Um, the, the city of, um, just a little bit of background about our health insurance, the city's health insurance benefit, um, as you guys know, is a self-insured platform and the city must bid for stop-loss insurance to protect us from high medical claims. So back on July the 10th, with the help of, uh, Lawton, uh, Lockton, which is our benefits consultant, um, we've sent out a bid for stop-loss insurance to find a provider. And let me tell you a little bit about, for those of you that don't know what stop-loss insurance is, um, it protects the city, again, like I said, catastrophic or unpredictable losses. The City of Colleen will be, will protect its plan with both specific and aggregated stop-loss coverage. A specific stop-loss, uh, protects the city against high claims on any one individual in which the claims exceed over 200,000 dollars. The aggregate stop-loss provides a ceiling on the dollar amount of expenses that the city would pay in total during the contract period. So we did the bids and we only had one bidder, which is United Healthcare. They are the same vendor that are, that we're using currently in this fiscal year, um, and the cost that they brought in was at 739,718 and that's the, what we, what we recommend. Now, Lockton did come in and help us. At first they were, it was going to be like a 32.2, a 32.8 increase and now it's really, um, it's only at a 17% increase, so we felt that that was a pretty good deal. So your options are, your alternatives are to accept or not accept the, um, the bid with United Healthcare to provide stop-loss insurance services and safeguard the city on high claims and the, the staff recommends that we do, um, accept that bid and, and work with United Healthcare. Any questions?
Councilmember Adams.
I got, just real quick, um, and this may be a dumb question. Um, we're self-insured and that's, I guess it's for, so everybody understands how important this is, if we're self-insured and we don't have this, where does the money come, come from to cover any, uh, extreme costs that, that, as you explained?
Um, I, I don't know that it would, I don't know, we wouldn't have any money to cover it. I mean, I think about your car insurance, if you have a wreck and you're not insured, then how are you going to pay it?
Right.
So that's the same thing with this is.
So that just becomes a debt of the city?
I would assume, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Cagle.
Well, we, we do have fund balance in that fund to cover, but it would, it's a bad gamble not to, not to buy stop-loss, but, uh, unless it was a terrible claim, we, we'd be able to cover quite, you know.
Probably would come out of our general fund.
Well, no, we have a specific health claims fund.
Okay, thanks.
So this coverage is essential to the health and welfare, no pun intended, of the City of Colleen.
That is right.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, there's no more questions.
Thank you.
I thought that was, you're right here, but. Madam Secretary.
RS 23141, consider a memorandum resolution rescheduling the city council meetings for November and December 2023 and January 2024.
This is the highlight of, of tonight for me, Mr. Cagle.
Mayor and Council, this, um, is in anticipation of the holiday season, if you want to approve this or some variation of this to give everybody opportunity to, uh, have time to make plans. But on the left, you can see our current meeting schedule, if we stuck to the exact dates and on the right is what we're proposing, so that we would have a workshop on November 7th, but then on November 14th, we would have the regular meeting that covers that November 7th workshop and then, um, adjourn that council meeting and have another workshop and we would skip the November 21 council meeting and November 28th have the regular meeting, um, for the workshop that occurred November 14th. And then in December, um, it's essentially the same thing, close to the same thing, we have a workshop December 5th and on December 12th, a meeting to cover that December 5th workshop, adjourn the council meeting, have a workshop and then December 19th have a regular meeting and then no meeting on December 26th. And then, because we have five Tuesdays in January, just don't have a meeting January 2nd and then it, it's essentially back to a regular schedule of, uh, workshop, regular meeting, workshop, regular meeting. And so, um, that's the proposal, I'd be happy to, uh, answer any questions or you want to entertain a different type of schedule.
I like it, the days this year fail in our favor, especially for the new year. All right, there's no questions. Thank you, Mr. Cagle. The bud, budget, public hearing will be held September the 12th, 2023. Madam Secretary.
PH 23050, hold a public hearing on the proposed tax rate for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2023 and ending September 30th, 2024.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So for next week, we'll have a series of meetings and the first one will be the tax rate public hearing. So to go over what we'll discuss next week, we'll have the, uh, property tax rate description, so we, we have the no new revenue rate, that's the tax rate that will generate the same amount. That's the tax rate that will generate the same amount of tax revenue as the previous fiscal year on properties that are taxed in both fiscal years. And for the city of Colleen for FY '24, that no new revenue tax rate is 5473. Then the budgeted tax rate is 6208. And that was the same tax rate that was used to prepare the FY '24 proposed budget. And on August 1st, city council set that as the tax ceiling. Our current year FY '23 tax rate is 6233. And then the voter approval rate, that is the tax rate that is calculated by increasing the maintenance and operation component of the no new revenue rate by 3.5% plus any unused increment rate. For FY '24, that amount is 7075. And if that amount were to be exceeded, it would cause an automatic election. So to go over the property tax levy comparison, this is what is included in the budget, the 64.3 million total levy with a proposed tax rate of 6208. If the no new revenue rate were to be used, it would be a reduction of 7.2 million. If the current tax rate were to be used, it would be an addition of 246,000. And if the voter approval rate were to be used, it would be an addition of 8.5 million. So a tax rate comparison, comparing the maintenance and operations and the debt rate for the proposed FY '24 to our current year. The proposed rate for MNO or maintenance and operation is 4742. That's an increase of less than a cent. It's .0086. And for the debt rate, it's a reduction of 0111. That's 1.11 cent. And that's a net change or net reduction of a quarter of a cent. So for every dollar of property tax paid, and this for our most current update, this would be 45 cents, goes to KISD. 33 cents goes to the city of Colleen. And 17 cents goes to Bell County. And that would be based on the most current updated rates coming from all the taxing entities. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Drake, thank you for that presentation. I wanted to clarify. And I don't know if you can provide any more or guidance or information on this. We have what we call a no new revenue rate, which in your presentation is 54 cents, almost 55 cents. Looking at some numbers that are out there because of the disabled veterans exemption growing. In your presentation, you said the no new revenue rate would produce the same amount that we generated last year. I don't believe that's correct with the growing disabled vet exemption. Is that? Can you speak to that at all?
That would create the same amount of general fund revenue or general fund and debt service for FY '23. It's the same amount for properties taxed in both years.
Right. What I'm saying is if, you're saying properties taxed in both years, but what if properties that were taxed in the previous year, now this year are no longer paying into the tax system? Does that change your numbers any? No?
The, the, well, the, the state's truth in taxation calculation accounts for that.
Okay. Gotcha.
It accounts for the exemptions coming on and off to equate from year to year.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, that do make sense what he asked. Because you don't know. But we got a system. We always got a system somewhere. Somewhere there's a system.
It's a very complicated formula.
Thank you. And thank you for that question, Councilmember Alvarez. Any more questions? Thank you, Mrs. Drake. Madam Secretary.
OR 23016, consider an ordinance adopting the annual budget for the city of Colleen for fiscal year beginning October 1, 2023 and ending September 30, 2024.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Mrs. Drake.
So this will be the presentation that will cover several of the items for next week that will, will go in a specific order that's required by law. So before you can adopt a tax rate, you are required to adopt a budget. So the first item will be on the budget. So again, this is the schedule that we have adhered to since the, the beginning of the, the budget being proposed in July. So we'll have the adoption of the budget after the tax rate public hearing. You'll adopt the budget and then you'll have the ratifying of the tax revenue increase and then the setting of the tax rate. So this is the same slide that we went over earlier in the budget public hearing where you have a proposed budget of 243.9, which is 7.99% less than the prior year budget. And then next week, your first item of action will take, be to take a record vote on the budget. Then the next item will be to do the ratifying of the property tax revenue increase. This is required by the local government code 102. And this is for the adoption of a budget that receives more property tax revenue than in the previous year, requires a separate vote to ratify the property tax revenue increase. So the total tax revenue increase is 7.8 million, which is 13.87% increase. 6.9 million of that is for maintenance and operations and 872,000 of that is for debt service. And this is required even though the tax rate is decreasing. So then we'll do the vote for the ratifying of the property tax increase. And then the next item will be for setting the tax rate. So this will come in two parts. You'll have the maintenance and operations rate of 4742, the debt service rate of 1466 for a total tax rate of 6208. And that is a budgeted revenue for the general fund of 49.9 million, 14.4 million for the debt service, and that's a total of 64.3 million. So property tax code will require that you take a record vote. It has to be approved by at least 60% of the city council, which will require five members. And there will be a required motion to approve the ordinance with specific language at next week's meeting. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mrs. Drake. Councilmember Adam.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And you can't affect this. I always found it weird that we voted on the budget, which has, we did base off a tax rate before. I mean, we voted on the actual tax rate, but I know we can't change that here, but it's just a little weird. There was some confusion when we started the cycle, budget cycle on the public hearing. And will the public hearings be separate for each item or are we going to cover all of them in the one public hearing?
There's only one.
And citizens can speak on all the items in that, on that line.
For this agenda, the only public hearing is for the tax rate because we've already had the public hearing on the budget.
Correct.
Okay.
Earlier tonight.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
It's just following the tax rate public hearing, then we have all of the items for the budget.
Yeah, and that clarifies it for me too. Thank you.
And then the budget has to be adopted by law before you can set the tax rate.
Yes. Even though I still think that's a little weird, but I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Drake. Madam Secretary.
So I'm going to read RS 23142 and OR 23017, even though Ms. Drake just went over these items with her presentation. But I'll read them into the record. Is that okay, Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am. I'm following your lead.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
RS 23142, consider a memorandum resolution ratifying the property tax revenue increase reflected in the annual budget for the fiscal year October 1, 2023 through September 30, 2024. OR 23017, consider an ordinance setting a tax rate of .6208 per hundred dollar valuation comprised of .4742 for maintenance and operations and .1466 for debt service for fiscal year 2024, tax year 2023.
Thank you, ma'am. Mrs. Drake. You have the next three items, 15, 16, and 17. Welcome back.
Madam Mayor, we are now on 17.
Okay. Oh, she just read those. Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
We're on number 17. Thank you.
Of course.
All right.
Okay. I'll go ahead and read 17 into the record. RS 23143, consider a memorandum resolution to adopt the five-year capital improvement program for fiscal year 2024 through 2028.
Thank you, ma'am. Now, Mrs. Drake.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So this is the item for the FY '24 capital improvement program. This is a summary by type. We have, the aviation had three projects at a total of $8 million. Drainage had one at 876. Facilities had eight projects at 2.1 million. I'll hit the highlights here. For vehicles and equipment, we had 52 pieces of equipment at a total of $6.4 million. And then water and sewer had five projects at a total of 5.7 million. So for a total of 78 projects and/or vehicles or equipment for a total of $28 million. So to look at this by fund, aviation was 8.2, water and sewer 7.2. The governmental CIP was 4.5. Solid waste CIP was 3 million. The TERS had 2.3 million and the drainage CIP 1.2 million. We had a total of 28 million. And the only changes to this from the original proposed was the, the change for the TERS for the additional 22,000 and then the projects that were added for the RV park. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. There are no questions up for you. The public hearing, the public hearing will be held September 12, 2023. Madam Secretary.
PH 23051, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance amending the FY 2023 annual budget for the city of, of the city of Colleen to increase revenue and expense accounts in multiple funds.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Mrs. Drake.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So this item is for the budget amendment for two items that were briefed earlier. One is for the solid waste hardware conversion. Originally, there was funding for the hardware conversion, but the, the application development, acquisition of three new vehicles, two backup units and some additional training in freight were not included. So they need an additional 60,000 to, to finish this project. And then for the solid waste fleet replacement, we had the additional 43,806 that's needed for the price increase for the three side loaders. So that would be a total of 60,000 and then the 43,806 in the solid waste CIP fund. And our recommendation is to amend the FY '23 budget. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Drake. There are no questions up here. All right, we're winding down. Items for discussion at workshop. Madam Secretary.
DS 23087, P&amp;Z update.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Commissioner, Mr. Minor slash Commissioner Minor.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Council. Let me get my mind on P&amp;Z real quick. Yes, so I want to give you the quarterly update for planning and zoning. Planning and zoning meets the first and third Monday of every month, barring any holidays. The commission begins the workshops at about 4 o'clock, followed by its regular meeting. The last quarterly meeting update was provided to council on March 7, 2000. I'm assuming that's supposed to be '23, not '22. Since that time, Planning and Zoning Commission has conducted seven meetings. Let's see. We've had, the commission has reviewed four preliminary plats, two final minor plats, one subdivision variance, zero flume amendment requests, seven zoning requests and a zero code ordinance, amendments to the code of ordinance. The preliminary plats, we had the East Tremere DDP addition. That is a one commercial lot and one lot for Parkland dedicated space. Some of the, some of that lot is in the floodplain and they dedicated that to the city for, for floodplain, for parks, park space. Then we have the Preserve at 1,000 Oaks, 955 residential lots and two commercial lots. We also have the Syntex RV and Boat Storage addition, two commercial lots. And Destiny World Outreach and Avanti Legacy Park View addition, two residential lots approved. For final plats, we had the Colleen Mall, Lot 1 or Lot A, 1A, Block 1 subdivision, one commercial lot. A Minkener addition replat, two commercial lots. Turnbow Ranch Phase 4, 183 lots. Turnbow Ranch Phase 5, 148 lots. Turnbow Ranch Phase 6, 244 lots. And Mitchell Farms Phase 1, 153 residential lots approved. Final minor replats, the Colleen Mall, Lot 1A, Block 1 subdivision, a commercial lot. That required a subdivision variance for internal access easement. And then we had Highway 195 replat, one residential, one commercial lot, required a subdivision variance for a flag lot. Approved plats, the subdivision variance for the Colleen Mall and then the Highway 195 replat. Flume requests, this says we have two, but I believe earlier I said there were zero. We had flume requests, 23-01, 3.727 acres from PS to RM, East Tremere. That was recommended approval on 3/20. And then flume 23-02 for 10.56 acres from NC to I, recommended approval on 5/1. Zoning requests, we had 13 zoning requests. Zoning requests, we had thirteen zoning requests. Z 23-03, Z 23-05, Z 23-07, and Z 23-10, all approved. Let's see. Let's see. Additional zoning requests approved, Z 23-11, Z 23-12, 23-13, 2302. And if you look to the other slides, we have additionally Z 23-14, 16, 06, 15, and 18 for zoning requests that were approved by this body. Code amendments, we had two Code of Ordinance amendments. Chapter 31, Section 31-833, demolition by neglect, and Chapter 31, Architectural and Design Standards. Specifically on that, that one, the architectural design standards, I know y'all have been reviewing that. The Commission voted to leave it alone, to leave it as is. We did amend it, and that was approved, but I think they brought it back to us to amend it and then to send it to y'all for consideration. I do know that we're going to review that again and P&amp;Z, and I would expect it to go unchanged. Just so you're aware of that, that the P&amp;Z, at least the first time that we voted on it, we wanted to keep it as is for the architectural design standards. Comp Plan Implementation in Progress, Year One Recommendations Completed. Underway, I don't know if City Staff is here, that probably can speak to this a little bit better. As far as the progress in implementation, I can tell you that we're trying to do everything we can to implement the comprehensive plan that the city adopted, but we definitely need the regulations and the Unified Code updates to implement those. Next, we have Colleen 2040, and I definitely believe that's something that staff needs to talk about if y'all have any questions about Colleen 2040 forward. Any questions on that?
No, sir. That's the comprehensive plan. Okay.
Okay.
No, sir.
And then, last question, comments. P&amp;Z will continue to do its part to facilitate Colleen's vision, future, and is looking forward to working with City Council. I'm available for any questions. I do want to mention a couple of other things real quick.
Thank you.
We do have a Commissioner that is going to be term limited. I believe this month she'll be coming off, so I think we'll be having an open spot on P&amp;Z. I do want to request a letter of appreciation for Commissioner O'Brien. She has served six years at the City of Colleen as a volunteer basis, and she was, she's always been there. Outside of that, I don't have any, anything further.
All right. Mr. Minor, if you go through the Communication Director, Janelle, and give her all that information, I will have one present one to her.
All right. Thank you.
Any questions? Councilmember Adams?
Just got a question. I notice a number of times when we get the zoning requests come back, they never total the full membership of the P&amp;Z. Are you, are you having an attendance issue?
No, no. We typically have all members present. We've never missed a meeting for having lack of quorum.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Minor, we truly appreciate, oh, sorry about that. We have some more. Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Thank you. Just wanted some clarity. Starting the presentation, I believe that we said that the one page was disapproved, but can you just confirm for me on Z 23-10, was it disapproved?
It does say it's disapproved. I had to get clarification on that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Councilmember Gonzalez, you have any more questions, ma'am? Well, you're welcome. Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Commissioner Minor, for your hard work there in P&amp;Z. I wanted to follow up with something that we've talked about in the past, which having had served on P&amp;Z myself for quite a while, I think is truly important, is the amount of training available to our commissioners. I know the State Planning Conference is coming up soon in November. I'd like to see, you know, that be made available to some commissioners. You know, I know that there's some online things that are made available to you guys, but there is really no substitute, I think, for that in-person, face-to-face training and interaction that you can gain. So just putting that out there, if you can put that out there to the rest of the commissioners, and see if they, if they're interested, they can get with staff on that and see if we can't help them get some more information and education when it comes to planning.
Yes, because of
Did y'all not go to planning in-person training?
Because of Council's actions last year, Planning and Zoning did attend the conference in El Paso. And this year, staff has made us aware of the next one coming up, and I do believe members expressed interest in attending that. So like I said, I do want to thank you all for making that available to P&amp;Z.
I thank staff for that, because they're on top of that. That was one of the direction, a directive from council last year, and staff have been faithful in following up with that.
Absolutely.
So I'm very excited about that. I just want to make a, you made a comment, I just want to comment on behalf of the City Council and staff. One of the things this City Council is focused on, we have and will continue to follow the comprehensive plan 2040. So whatever your intent is of architecture or design that's left up to this council, but the meat of all of the comprehensive plan, we have and will continue to follow that. And with that being said, we thank you for all you do, and tell the rest of the commissioners that we are truly appreciative.
I will. Thank you.
Madam Secretary.
DS 23088, discuss commercial truck parking.
Good evening, Mrs. Messer.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. This item tonight is an update regarding commercial truck parking. As you know, on June 20th, we gave a presentation to the council regarding potential ways to address the lack of commercial truck parking in Colleen. And at that time, the council's direction was to have staff prepare a recommendation regarding economic development incentives for commercial truck parking. So since that time, staff has partnered with KEDC to come up with a recommendation for a potential incentive to attract commercial truck parking. So the recommendation at this time is regarding a piece of property in the business park. The address is 706 Swannor Loop. It's approximately 1.39 acres in size. It's currently owned by KEDC. It's zoned M1, which does allow for commercial truck parking by right. And as I said, it's in the business park, and it's also located within the TERS boundary. So on your screen is an aerial of that site. As you can see, it's on the northeast corner of Enterprise and Swannor. It's a triangular-shaped piece of property, so it's it's a little bit of an awkward shape, and it's probably difficult for a more conventional user. So it was a piece of property that that the chamber recommended as a possible location for truck parking. It's currently undeveloped, as you can see here, and could be a viable location for truck parking. So with that, our recommendation is that KEDC provide the property at 706 Swannor Loop to a prospective developer as an incentive to build commercial truck parking in this location. And in addition to that, the council has the ability by ordinance to waive any development fees associated with this potential project coming online. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, and I don't see anyone. Madam Secretary.
I got a question. I have a comment, rather.
Oh, I apologize. I didn't see it. Yes, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I just want to take a moment to thank staff, work with KEDC to develop an initiative to address the lack of truck parking. This is something I believe will help to attract a developer to meet the needs, so thanks again for working towards this.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Saghar.
Kind of the same thing. Thanks for doing it, but I know that the city can only take it so far. You can only do so much, because I know we've been down this route before with KEDC. The challenge is, as Mr. Boyd said, trying to attract somebody, and you've got to get somebody that, from the private sector to come in and show him that it can be profitable. That's a challenge in itself. His liability and security that comes with all of that, and so that's always been the challenge. But from the city's perspective, I just want to say, I think you guys just did what you have to and took it to where it needs to go. But from this point on, I think that it's just like anything else, is trying to attract somebody. And hopefully with KEDC, they'll be able to put something together. I don't know if there's any type of incentives or anything they can do, because I don't think there'll be enough of them out there, but at least we're going in the right direction. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. During previous meeting, I had inquired, I believe, to Mr. Revell if we were going to reach out to some of the people that had come before us regarding this, because we had some private investors that were actually interested in this particular opportunity. Do we know if that's happened, or are we in the process of that?
Yes, ma'am. So that was brought up at a previous meeting, and as you'll recall, probably a year, year and a half ago, there was an applicant that requested a zoning change for commercial truck parking. That particular location was determined not to be the most appropriate location for this type of use. We did reach back out to her through the contact information that she had on file for that zoning application, and I received no response back from her regarding that, so.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Once again, thank you. And Mr. Connell, he left the KEDC board with that time. Councilwoman Gonzalez and Mayor Protim Cobb, and also Mayor Saghar was always a part of that planning process. And my concern is, I'm glad that they do have the land available. I mean, it's excellent. My concern is, even if someone, the potential of getting some individual or company to go over in the park, which is extremely dangerous, you know, in that area. I think my, I guess it's dangerous to sense that you have to go through the whole city to get over there in that location, which makes it dangerous for, first of all, infrastructure, that's my concern. I'm grateful that we have a spot. Dangerous times of night, people on bikes, people walking. You have to come off of I-14 to go all the way in that area. And I think that may be a concern for a potential person to develop that area. The distance in between to get to the park, but grateful that we have that opportunity to extend that property to a potential company. Okay, thank you. With that being said, Madam Secretary.
DS 23089, review of car wash water usage.
This is yours, Councilmember Saghar. Welcome back, Mr. Reynolds.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Mayor. Council has requested that staff perform an analysis of the number of car washes throughout the city, along with the average water consumption. Staff compiled information from eleven car washes, seven automatic car washes, and four wash base facilities within the city of Colleen. I'd like to note that there's another four that's in the process of being built as we speak. In the process of gathering the data, it was determined that all seven automatic car washes have the capability to recycle their water. This is a map with the locations. The blue stars show the automatic car washes throughout the city. The green stars indicate the wash base, car washes throughout the city. We also looked at the top commercial users of water for water consumption. In addition to, staff identified the top ten water consumption commercial users for which are automatic car washes, and the car washes make up about 24% of the highest commercial consumption. The 17% is composed of the schools, based on the top ten. And we have 59% that's based on the commercial businesses, as well as hospitals and things of that nature. Next slide will kind of give you a breakdown of those top ten that we did identify for as top water consumption users within the city of Colleen for commercial properties. And this is, basically goes along with this slide up front. Yes, sir?
That's a quick question. Do schools use that much water?
Yes, sir.
Wow. And we're not including Colleen or, well, Harkins is not here, but Colleen and Chaprow?
They didn't make the list for the top ten.
Wow.
And this is, this is basically the top ten users. Yes, sir?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. The water consumption, this is basically gives you the trends over the, for the last 12 months. You're looking at the FY 21 through FY 23, and you can see during the months, basically June, July, August, there's always traditionally a spike in water uses throughout the city. We're pretty much on that trend again this year, so it's not uncommon for water to spike during this time of the year. A little, what we did in summary was looked at, automated car washes in Colleen, some of the advantages of them, they employ, on average, speaking to the car washes, about 15 employees each. On average, there's about 300 vehicles washed in each automatic car wash daily. Studies have shown that automated car washes are more gentle on the paint of the surface of the vehicle, saves time, as the average car wash lasts about five minutes, environmentally responsible, as wastewater is recycled or treated prior to discharge back into our sewer system, and it uses between 35 to 75 gallons of water per wash. As opposed to washing it in your front yard, a same study shows that it's more time-consuming, uses between 80 and 150 gallons versus the 35 to 75 gallons you saw in the last slide. And it's not environmentally sound, as it sends dirty water contaminated by oils, gas, soap, and other cleaning chemicals directly back into our storm sewer system. So there are some advantages to having your, having car washes versus washing in your driveways. As we go into the regulatory options on this, I'm going to punt it over to the City Attorney to go over some regulatory options as we look at that as well.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Good evening again, Mayor and City Council. There were some concerns, I think, when this issue was brought up about water usage, and Mr. Reynolds has gone through some of the water usage information, but I did want to provide you with potential options. So the first one I have here is you can adopt amendments to the drought contingency plan. Our water conservation and drought contingency plan is in Chapter 30 of our Code of Ordinances, and it's reviewed every five years. The next regular review is coming up in 2024. Under the current plan, once stage four water restrictions are in place, vehicle washing at commercial car washes and service stations shall occur only between 6:00 and 10:00 a.m. or, and 6:00 p.m., 6:00 and 10:00 p.m. That starts at stage four. There could be updates to that plan. The second option we have here is to adopt amendments to the International Plumbing Code that would require new car washes to use a water recycling system or other water-saving methods. The next international informational, International Plumbing Code update is set for release in 2024, and the city usually adopts that within a year of release. There are, in addition to adopting that requirement for new car washes in the plumbing code, you could look at adopting an ordinance just requiring water reuse at car washes that are equipped with that system. So that would kind of work hand in hand. And then the third option on this slide I have is to adopt a vehicle wash facility certification program. We saw this in another city, and this would require car washes to complete an annual inspection and would prohibit certain dumping of water from the reverse osmosis water purification system. So there's a couple of different options that we've seen in other cities and other communities. I wanted to, the next two slides that I go through talk about a moratorium on specific commercial development. And I want to be clear that, you know, placing a moratorium is not meant to be permanent. It's temporary only, and it's only, a moratorium is to preserve the status quo while new regulations are being considered. So if you wanted to take any of the options on the previous slides, or look at something else, that, the moratorium, you can do that. So to place a moratorium, the city has to issue written findings based on reasonably available information that the moratorium has justified, and demonstrate that applying existing ordinances and demonstrate that applying existing ordinances and other laws is inadequate at this time to prevent the new development from being detrimental to public health and safety or welfare of the residents of the municipality. Couple more things about the moratorium. So development approved prior to adoption of a moratorium is unaffected by the moratorium. And instituting a moratorium requires certain public notices and public hearings and expires generally after ninety days, but can be extended for an additional ninety days. And it must have the goal of adopting some type of regulation that addresses the health and safety concern while allowing the use. All right, that's, that's, that's all I have. And if you have any questions, it'd be for Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, mayor, and I just want to say thank you, because because this is something that always comes up, especially during droughts like this. And I know that in the past, as councilmembers, we always get questions, especially, you know, I don't think we've had as many car washes as we have now. But even back then, you know, we would get these questions about these car washes. And I'm glad that you were able to put it in writing, because this is information that I think everybody should be aware of. I know this is a keeper for me, this slide, because it gives me proper response to answer, because I didn't know about, you know, how it's more efficient and recyclable. So that's all good stuff that we know. After, after your presentation, I was like, more people should use car washes. So it's probably a good thing. And so I appreciate that. And the question I had, because I know that the attorney brought something about the plumbing code that required new car washes to use the water recycling. But you're saying that all the car washes, the seven car washes already have that in place? Is that what we're talking about? Are we talking about the same thing, or is this a different type of system?
Yes, sir. The seven, we talked to all seven automatic car washes as well as the handheld. All the automatic car washes have the capability. Now, all of them are not using the recycle.
Oh, got it, got it.
But they are, they have the capability. But all of them are straining the water and taking out the bad stuff before it goes back into the sewer system. That's part of the system as well. But recycle, no, they're not. I think we found one car wash that was actually using the recycle.
Yeah, so maybe that's how we got to get more information from them and see if it's something that is doable, cost-effective, all that good stuff for them. So when that comes back for updates, maybe that's something I can look into. All right, thank you, appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, madam. First question I have, I noticed a couple of service stations weren't on the, didn't get stars. Did you also check them as well?
No, we stuck to the, because the service station, the car wash comes basically as part of the gas station. We're not, I don't think people had an issue with the gas station. So we didn't look at those. We looked at the, the car washes that have been built, because my understanding was that's what the director was more geared towards.
So if, so if we adopt any of these regulatory options, it would, these, those, the service stations would also be included in like any future, obviously?
It could. I mean, depending on what your direction is and depending on what the findings are as staff, because these, these aren't recommendations per se yet. They're just options and things we've seen. And so any, any, any way we move forward, we would need to look at that more specifically.
Okay, I don't want to leave anybody out either. The other thing with the moratorium, and you mentioned that some of the automatic wash already have the, the, not moratorium, but if we, we already have some of them that have the ability to recycle, but not recycle.
Yes, sir.
So if we decided to do a, one of our regulatory options, could we require if they already have a facility? Even, I know if they, we can't force them if they don't do it yet. They don't already have a system.
Right, I think you, you could require them to use the system that they have the capability that's already installed, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, mayor, and thank you again, Mr. Reynolds, for that presentation. I can only speak for myself. I think if there's an opportunity for us to look at requiring water recycling systems with the 2024 IPC code update, I, for one, would be interested in seeing that, especially after you stated that the seven automatic car washes you've looked at, all seven had the capability, meaning the equipment to recycle the water on hand. They were just not using it. So that's not, to me, that doesn't say that it's a cost burden, because they already have the equipment there. They just need to use it. So if that was a route that the council wanted to go, I guess this question is for Mrs. Clements. Do we know that this is something that's going to be a requirement in the plumbing code update? Or is this something that we would want to add to that plumbing code update?
This would be an amendment to it. I do not believe it would be in the plumbing code without an amendment.
So it doesn't really matter if we did it now or we did it with the plumbing code update?
That's correct. You could do it at any time. I was just, for informational purposes, telling you when the, because we'll be coming back after the plumbing code, international plumbing code is released in 2024. We'll be reviewing all of that, coming back with those changes again. So if you change something now, you'd be coming back fairly soon anyway, just as information.
Okay. I mean, that makes more sense to me, based on the information that you've given us. A moratorium doesn't sound like the way to go. I mean, you have strip centers that are using similar amounts of water. So I don't think that would be fair to single out a car wash when you have strip centers using similar amounts of water if we're just basing a decision on water consumption. It seems the most sound way to move forward would to be requiring some sort of water recycling system. I know that this, this may not be directly related to this, but the city of Colleen in chapter thirty-two has post-construction, post-construction development credits. And one of those options that developers and builders can attain that credit is through zero escaping. If we're talking about water conservation, you know, that's one of those things that we can push, I think, as well. If a builder or developer proposes zero escaping for their project, they should also be providing a water conservation plan showing how the, that zero escaping is going to use less water than typical turf landscaping. So I think there's other things that we can look at in conjunction with this. But it all makes sense, because water, I mean, we all know how precious water is becoming, so. Thank you for the presentation.
Yes, sir.
Any other councilmembers? Mr. Reynolds and Attorney Clements, thank you. As you stated, I'm really own big, small businesses. And so as Councilmember Alvarez, I think the direction that we're going is great. I think the car washes are predicated on the demand. That's just like anything else that we do in the city of Colleen. The demand is there. And like he stated, some people like me, for instance, wash my car three to four times a week. And in this area, it's a lot of dust. And, and it's just a lot of development costs, a lot of dust. And then we have our soldiers and family members. And as we continue to grow, I think it will pan out within itself that the need is there. And Councilmember Sagara had a great point, that it is more cost-effective to go to a car wash than to wash your car at home. This is our last item. Mr. Cagle wants the Madam Secretary read it. The floor is yours. Madam Secretary.
DS twenty-three zero nine zero, discuss and consider setting a date for the city council annual special workshop town hall.
Mr. Cagle.
Just mayor and council, I think it's in your governing standards to have one, at least one a year, I believe, in the October timeframe. And just throw it out on the floor for you to suggest some dates and times.
Do you have a recommended date? Because I know we're going to be at TML and we're also be at AUSA in October. So any Thursday, I think we all happy with that.
I do not have a recommendation.
Councilwoman Gonzalez, could you pull up the two, the third and fourth week Thursday and recommend either one of those dates for council to select at five o'clock here, the third week? Because the second week, we'll be at AUSA. Councilmember Sagara recommend nineteen. So can, is everybody okay with the nineteenth of October? You okay, Councilmember Alvarez? Councilmember Solomon? I know you are. Okay, so the nineteenth of October, five o'clock here.
So I want to, I think we should, I recommend rather we go with six o'clock, give folks an opportunity to be here for the town hall.
Everybody okay with six? Thank you. Six o'clock, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Anyone else to second to that motion? Councilwoman Gonzalez, all in favor, yes; all opposed, no. Meeting adjourned.